Okay, so it is now 5:02 PM. And we do have a quorum of board members attending this evening. So I'd like to call this regular meeting of the Board of Finance to order. For the record, today is Tuesday, March 18th, 2025. We have participants via Zoom and in person. So for the record, we have Board of Finance member James Wright attending in person. And attending via Zoom, I have Wendy Trab, Devi Anasito. Is that Christopher Anderson or Christopher Bayes? Chris Bayes. That's four. And that is our quorum. So we can jump right in. Excuse me, before we jump back to the agenda, could we kindly stand and pledge the flag? Okay, now I'll jump into item one on the agenda. I'll entertain a motion to open the meeting to the public. Thank you, Mr. Wright. And second by Mr. Bayes. All in favor? Any opposed? We're good to go. Anyone from the public wishing to address the board at this time? Hello, Chief.
Hello. I'm not sure which microphone I should use, so I'll just pick one. Good afternoon, mayors of the Board of Finance. For those of you who haven't met me before or heard from me, I am Tom Kalinowski. I'm the chief of Drakeville Volunteer Fire Department. And I'm here today to respectfully request that the $60,000, which is already allocated for the volunteer line item, be used for Drakeville's FY 25-26 stipend. As this board is aware, we have recently lost one of our fellow volunteer fire departments, which means that Drakeville is now going to bear the brunt of being the sole provider of supplemental fire service in the city of Torrington. We've experienced rapid personal growth, which has greatly benefited the city in our response times. But as a result, our increases have also increased. Our expenses have also increased, excuse me. We are not asking for anything extra. We are simply asking that the $60,000, which is already allocated, stay with the volunteers, which represents only 1% of the city's total fire budget. We are also planning on hosting an open house to all of the public officials within the city of Torrington. The date is to be determined at this time, but I will be in contact with each of you when that date is set. And your support will ensure Drakeville's longevity to continue to reliably protect the city as a supplemental fire service provider. Thank you for your consideration, and I hope to be working with you soon.
Thank you. Is there anyone else from the public that wishes to address the board? Okay. We'll move into item number two. I'll entertain a motion to A to accept the regular meeting minutes of February 18th, 2025.
So moved.
Thank you, Mrs. Trab.
Second.
Second by Mr. Wright. Are there questions or comments on the February 18th minutes? Moving, I'll call the motion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
One abstention, Mayor.
Thank you. For the record, Board Member Bayes abstains. Item two B, I'll entertain a motion to accept the special joint meeting minutes with the City Council from March 5th, 2025.
So moved.
All right, I heard Mr. Wright and Mrs. Trab. All right, so any questions or comments on the special joint meeting minutes? Hearing none, I'll call the motion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries. Item three, this is a presentation, doesn't require a motion. So at this point, I want to turn the microphone and presentation page to Leslie Zoll from CLA and Gabe.
Hey, good evening. Thank you. We'd like to present our audit results for the city of Torrington for June 30th, 2024. So I'm going to start out just with an audit scope, like what were you responsible for? High-level audit results, some financial statement highlights. And Gabe's going to talk about the federal and state single audit, some required communication and some of the management letter recommendations. And then I'll end the presentation with some industry insights and some GASP's that are coming down the pike for the city. So in terms of our audit approach, we express opinions on whether or not the basic financial statements are in accordance with GAAP. We're not responsible for the creation of the financial statements. That lies with the town's management. But we express an opinion on whether those statements are in accordance with GAAP. We also express an opinion on the schedule of expenditures and federal awards, as well as state financial assistance, and render an opinion on compliance related to major federal and state programs that we test. And we have guidelines that determine what those are each year. I do think it's important at these meetings to just reiterate that we do not opine on internal control in any way, but we are responsible for letting those charged with governance know if there's any material weaknesses or significant deficiencies to report to you as we went through the audit, either through the financial statements as a whole or as it relates to major state and federal programs. As far as the audit results go, I am very pleased to report that the city of Torrington did receive clean opinions all around. This was, you know, a feat that's been going for a few years now. We've had material weaknesses in '22 and '23. We're finally over that hurdle in '24. You received unmodified opinions on the financial statements, as well as the single audits, but there are no material weaknesses or significant deficiencies on the internal control side to report to you today. So congratulations to the town for that achievement. As far as the financial statement highlights as a whole, I like to show you each of the basic financial statements as they existed at 6:30, 2024. The slide right now has two columns. One is the governmental activities, which reports all of your funds together, all of your governmental funds together, with the exception of your pension and OPEB trust funds. And this is on a full accrual basis of accounting. So it includes all your long-term assets, all your long-term liabilities as it relates to the governmental funds. Total net position is $19.7 million. That's an increase of $73 million from the previous fiscal year. And that large increase is really a result of recognizing capital grants for the Torrington High School renovation. That next column, business-type activities, is your WPCA Enterprise Fund. You had a net position of $53.8 million, and that increased $882 from the previous fiscal year. Moving on to the next statement, this is Exhibit Three in your financial statements. And we opine on each one of these columns separately. Within the financial statements, the general fund is always a major fund. Fund balance at 6:30 was $21.2 million. That's an increase of $3.2 million from last year. Your bonded projects fund balance is $11.8 million. That increased $1.5 million from last year. You can see here, your ARPA fund has no fund balance. However, if you look at that unearned revenue figure of $5.4 million, that's essentially what you still had to spend on that grant as of 6:30, 2024. As you know, all of those had to be obligated by 12:31, 24. But you do have till 2026 to actually spend them, spend those funds that were obligated. The next column is on your Torrington High School renovation. You have a negative fund balance of $28.4 million. And that just has to do with timing of when you bond. Right now, you have bond anticipation notes on your balance sheet of $34 million. That was, that fund increased $1 million from last year. And then that non-governmental funds column is a combination of smaller funds together. And that detail can be found in the back of your financial statements. Total fund balance of all of those funds are $33.3 million, and that increased $6.5 million from the previous fiscal year. The next financial statements is your internal service funds, self-insurance fund and maintenance fund. Net position is $9.9 million for self-insurance. That decreased $1.9 million for the fiscal year. And your maintenance fund does have a negative fund balance of $822,000. That decreased by $223,000 for the fiscal year. And then lastly, your fiduciary fund statements, which is your pension and OPEB. You have net assets held in trust for your police and firemen of $78 million. That increased roughly $6 million from last year. Your municipal employees' plan increased about $2 million. And your OPEB trust fund increased about $255,000. And this is very consistent with the rest of the state because the market did well in '24. And then just some other highlights within the financial statements. I know the financial statements can be voluminous, over 100 pages. We just want to highlight some of the figures that you see in the financial statements. Unassigned fund balance of $16.2 million is about $10.9 of general fund expenditures. Your budgetary revenues came in lower than expected by $626,000. But your expenditures also came in lower than expected at $2.4 million. And I have, on your slides, you'll see where those are reflected in the financial statements. And then on your pension plans, you have your municipal employees' plan, $10.4 million. That's 81% funded. And then your police and firemen plans, 67% funded. OPEB right now, your liability is $108.5 million. That's 1.71% funded.
All right, everyone. My name's Gabe Epstein. I'm a director at CLA. I work with Leslie in the state and local government practice. I'm briefly going to go over the results of the federal and state single audits with you. On the federal side, we have total awards expended of $10.6 million. This is about a $2 million decrease from 2023. Major programs we tested this year on the federal side, coronavirus state and local fiscal recovery funds. It's more commonly known as the ARPA grant. And we also tested the child nutrition cluster. This is a grant we typically test every three years, as long as there's no findings, as the federal government dictates. Last time we tested it was in 2021. Other results on the federal side, the city received an unmodified opinion on major program compliance, and there were no compliance or internal control findings. Moving on to the state side, total state financial assistance awards expended were $105.7 million. And this is a pretty significant increase from prior year, which was about $49 million. This is primarily due to an increase in the school construction grant of $53 million are related to Torrington High School. This particular grant, school construction, is an exempt grant, meaning that we don't have to test it as a major program as part of the state single audit. Major programs we did test this year, the Alliance District Grant. This is related to education. Groundfield remediation and development is the Torrington Business Park Project. And the CT Communities Challenge Grant. This is for the Sophia Building and Railroad Square, remediating those for mixed-use affordable housing. And results on the state side, once again, unmodified opinion on major program compliance, and there were no compliance or internal control findings. Briefly going to go over the governance communications. This is a letter sent at the conclusion of the audit. Basically goes over some key matters. So I'll briefly run through the items here. Overall, there were no new standards adopted. There was a new standard this year, GASP 100 accounting changes and error corrections, but it did not have any impact on Torrington's financial statements. There are no difficulties encountered in performing the audit. A couple estimates listed here. These are what we consider the most sensitive estimates because of their significance to the financial statements and also the possibility that future events affecting them could differ significantly from expectations. So three items here, net pension liability, net OPEB liability, and your incurred but not reported claim liability, your IBNR. Other items in the letter, there were no disagreements with management. Management did not consult with other accountants. There was one uncorrected misstatement related to Board of Ed prepaid's recorded as expenditures, and we'll discuss this momentarily in the management letter section. And last but not least, there were no independence issues during this audit. So moving along here to the management letter recommendations. And these are basically best practices, other items warranting the attention of management, but not rising to a level of a deficiency we would note in the financial statements or the single audit reports. First item that we have here is prepaid's. Basically, these are expenditures representing the right to receive services in a future period. So in this particular instance, during our testing, we identified some items paid by the Board of Education in fiscal year '24 that were for goods and services to be received in fiscal year '25. Typically, this would go on your balance sheet as a prepaid asset. In this situation, they were recorded as expenditures in fiscal year '24. The result of this was a past adjustment because the amounts were not material to the financial statements. Our recommendation related to the prepaid's is that the Board of Ed review their year-end expenditures during cutoff to ensure that they properly record items of this nature. The second item listed here is the health insurance fund. For the health insurance fund, the Board of Ed did not transfer all of their budgeted contributions to the fund for fiscal year '24. The Board of Ed subsequently decided to terminate their participation in the plan. And two recommendations related to this, that the city obtain a legal opinion to determine the appropriate obligations and distributions related to this transaction for fiscal year '25, and that the Board of Ed review their controls and ensure that there are proper checks and balances over the new plan. Some additional items here on the management letter. We have fund deficits. So three funds we noted were in a deficit position, Torrington High School Reno, Equipment Maintenance Fund, and the Economic Development Fund. Torrington High School is the most significant right now, as Leslie mentioned. And we are just recommending that the city develop a plan to fund these deficits and to monitor funds going forward to avoid deficits when feasible. Couple other items listed here. IT, we are recommending that the city develop a comprehensive disaster recovery plan and also upgrade their firewall solution. And for cybersecurity, we're recommending an annual vulnerability assessment should be performed. And then last but not least here, fraud risk assessment for the city and Board of Ed. These can be formal, like hire an outside party to come in and do it. It can be informal amongst management. But basically, this is brainstorming about the ways that fraud, you know, could occur within the city's control environment and coming up with, you know, ways to mitigate those risks. I'll turn it back over to Leslie here for some GASP standards.
Okay. GASP that's effective for June 30th, 2025 is GASP 101 on compensated absences. The most significant change here is on sick leave and whether or not that sick leave will be paid out to those employees. Some people across the country are calculating that differently. So the GASP thought that we needed to standardize that practice across the United States. It may or may not largely impact that liability, but we'll work with the finance office to look at that and make sure they're in accordance with that GASP. Certain risk disclosures, GASP 102, not going to be too significant. We will help you write those if there's any risk disclosures that are needed within the financial statements. We'll help you draft those. And then in 2026, you will see the financial statements change a little bit. More specifically, in the proprietary fund statements, they might look a little different than they currently do. And again, we can certainly help you with any of the implementations of those standards. I did, if you all have a copy of this, if you want to go on and get that QR code, we do have a number of articles that we write on current things that are going on in the industry. We have free webinars that you're welcome to go on to. We're also having a breakfast in West Hartford for those charged with governance to learn about how to read financial statements and what you need to do with those. So you can find that on our website. And that completes our presentation. Does anyone have any questions?
The floor is open for questions.
Not a question, Mayor, just a comment, actually, two quick things. Number one, kudos to your finance department for clearing up those administrative errors we had in '22, '23. Glad to see, I know they're more so clerical in reporting differences and not so much financially related, but I'm glad to see those resolved. Number two, I think we already knew about this health insurance fund on the BOE. I know that it's still a concern of mine, and I'm sure of some of the rest of us, that that is not properly funded and the hole that that leaves. And I'm glad that the audit also prepares that bit of information for everybody to digest. And yeah, that's all I have.
Thank you, Mr. Bayes. Any other questions?
Mayor.
So I'll just comment on, so the recommendation was that we get a legal opinion. And as the board knows, to do so, we were attempting to get all of the documents that the Board of Education had relative to going into a self-insured account. It's taken a little bit of time for us to get that. So it's delayed our ability to get that legal opinion. But we are making progress towards getting all the documents, the contract and all of the underlying documentation. And we have retained outside counsel to review all of that. So we're working towards that. We should be able to get that under control. So when the FY '25 audit happens, we'll have those answers. And I just wanted to take a moment to thank CLA. Over the last, I'm going to say, three years, it's been a real, I won't say a challenge, but it certainly has been much harder to get through these audits. You know, timing is always an issue. Everything post-pandemic has been complicated. And CLA has been such an incredibly patient and helpful partner. It was, I think, everybody's thrill this year to close this one out before December 31st. It's been a long time since we've been able to do that. So when Mr. Bayes acknowledged the financial team, our new comptroller, Olivia, I've got to stop calling you new. You've been here for over a year now. Olivia DeRosa and our deputy comptroller/budget manager, Erica Johnson. They really have done an amazing job in getting us to a point where I think that we're ready, you know, to provide those documents that we'll need to go into the next audit and similarly finish it on time. So thank you very much. And just so the Board of Finance members are aware, we did obtain council approval to extend the contract with CLA for another year. So they will be working on the FY '25 audit with us.
Thank you.
Now.
Mayor?
Oh, Wendy, I'm sorry, yes, Mrs. Trab.
I just wanted to comment that, obviously, I think there was conversation on a Board of Finance meeting many months back, me having concerns about expenditures being made in June for the Board of Ed. And I just want to thank the auditors for making mention that if they are prepaid services, which I think, I do believe we did find several, that if they are prepaid, that it should be recorded as such. That being said, I think it's better in the future for, you know, unless there's budgetary reasons why they have to do it before the year end, to have that money, which they can set aside anyway, set aside at the end of June, and then they could utilize those funds, you know, as of July 1st, just for transparency purposes, obviously. If that can't be done, then at least make sure that they're recorded as prepaid liabilities so that we do have the correct recording of them.
Thank you, Mrs. Trab.
This is Devi Anasito. I too would like to thank our finance team. Erica and Olivia, thank you so much for your hard work and working together with CLA. And very happy to see this. Great job, guys.
Thank you. All right.
Thanks.
I'll walk right home. And thank you, Gabe. It's good to see you in person again. Okay. I'm going to move right into item four. I will entertain a motion, I apologize. I'll entertain a motion to approve the budget transfer's request for FY '24-25 as further described in the Manager of Budgets letter dated March 12th, 2025, pending City Council approval.
So moved.
Thank you, Ms. Anasito.
Second.
And second by Mrs. Trab. Do we have any questions?
Mayor, I just have a general question.
Yes, Mrs. Trab.
And this goes for everybody, because of the budgetary years I'm getting used to. The account that that money is being transferred from, the increase-decrease official in wage from that separate fund, that's an overall estimate, correct, every year on our budget? We don't know what those increases are going to be at the time.
From Department 44? Yes. Yeah. Yeah, that is always a rough estimate. We think we know where we're laying, but until those negotiations are finalized. Other questions or comments? Hearing that, and did I read pending council approval into the record? Okay, so I'm going to reread, and I'll ask for the amendment. So the approval for the budget transfer request is no longer pending City Council approval, so it's just an approval. So would you amend your motion, Mrs. Anasito? And your second, Mrs. Trab?
Yes.
Thank you. All right, so a motion has been made, seconded. If there are no other questions, I'll call this motion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Okay. Item five, I'll entertain a motion to accept the performance reports for the city for the current fiscal year through February 28th, 2025.
So moved.
Right. And second by Mr. Bayes. Are there questions or comments? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? This motion carries. Item six, I'll entertain a motion to accept the Board of Education budget performance reports for the current fiscal year through February 28th, 2025. So moved. Thank you, Mr. Wright. And second by Mrs. Wright. Excuse me, Mrs. Trab. I can't even blame cold medicine, it's just the cold. All right, so the motion is made and seconded. Other questions on the budget performance reports?
Nothing at this time.
All right, hearing none. I'll call this motion, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item seven, I'll entertain a- Item seven, I'll entertain a motion to consider business by the department heads.
So moved.
Thank you, Mrs. Trapp, and seconded by Mrs. Sinasino. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Or good. So from the Treasurer's Office, anything this evening, Dan?
I'm sorry.
I haven't spoken to the board about our bond sale as of yet, so I addressed the council, but excuse me one second, I got to get my glasses. Tough to get old. So we had our our bond and note sale on, uh, January, uh, February twenty sixth, and the closing was just, uh, done last week on March thirteenth. We went out to bid for fifteen million, nine hundred thousand dollars in general obligation bonds. And we went out to bid for uh, twenty two million, three hundred and fifty thousand dollars in bond anticipation notes. On the bonds themselves, uh, we were quite surprised, we ended up with fifteen bidders. And the award was given to Cabrera Capital Markets. And they came in with a true interest cost of three point two six, seven two, six zero. And at the time that this came in, it just happened to be the lowest bid uh, in the state of Connecticut for any, uh, municipality, regardless of rating. Uh, there were several that were at higher ratings than we did, and we ended up, uh, with a great bid there. Uh, not only was the interest rate low, but we also received a premium payment of one million, three hundred and thirteen thousand, two hundred and sixty eight dollars and forty nine cents in addition to the fifteen million, nine hundred thousand that was awarded. On the bond anticipation notes, we had, uh, six bidders. And it was awarded to, uh, Janie Montgomery Scott at a net interest cost of two point eight one four eight. And they also paid us a premium of two hundred and sixty four thousand, one hundred and fifty four dollars and sixty five cents. I think in in addition to the sale, we were all quite pleased. Um, Bill Lindsay is since, Bill Lindsay is from Munistat, and he's the one that advises us through this process and helps us get, send these bids out. He's been extremely helpful. He sent us some other information after the, uh, sale had gone through. And, uh, recently he sent some out a couple of weeks ago. And I think it it was all of New England. We still had the second lowest bid on the bonds. There was one uh, municipality in New York State that had a triple A rating that got, uh, two hundred basis points better than than we did, but uh, other than that, it was smooth sailing, everything went well. Any questions? Thank you.
Thank you. All right, anything from the City Clerk's Office? No? Finance, any updates?
Um, just wanted to let everybody know that we do have, um, an Assistant Deputy Comptroller coming. Um, she will be starting on March thirty first, so that will be nice. Just to help with everything.
Okay. So, um, and I'm gonna look to Erica, just, um, highlights of going into our budget.
Um, we've started the process, we've started the budget subcommittee looking at that. Uh, pretty soon we will start looking at the revenues and anything, um, that could impact, obviously, what'll happen with our budget. Um, as you all know, we went through the revale. So we're looking kind of at those numbers and how the revale will also impact the revenue coming in.
So, um, plenty of, um, information to chew on when it comes to how those revaluation numbers are going to get applied. Um, because as you all know, with the revaluation, um, residential real estate went up at a much higher percentage rate than the commercial properties did. Um, multifamily homes went up much higher than the single family homes. Uh, and the, um, midsize, mid to larger sized, single family homes uh, went up higher than the, um, smaller, um, single family homes. So there is absolutely going to be an uneven distribution of, um, how this will impact, uh, all of the taxpayers. It isn't like there's going to be a one size fits all and then trying to break down some of the neighborhoods, uh, you know, based on, you know, the, uh, neighborhood development, uh, sizes of the houses, age of the houses, and then comparing them to, you know, the newer builds that are larger. Um, and, uh, it is, uh, it's all over the map. It's, it's not an easy. Uh, it's not an easy story to tell, so I think over the next two months. And this is where I so greatly appreciate Erica and Olivia's, um, accounting skills because we're just throwing together spreadsheets and Excel documents all over the place, and, um, we're going to hopefully land on one that is easy for the general public to understand. Um, I know what else I wanted. Um, did you want to talk about the budget book, um, software?
Sure, so the mayor and I met with, uh, ClearGov is the company, they put together a digital budget book, basically. Um, like the mayor was saying, it's kind of an easier way for the public to understand um, our budget documents, it puts it in a much cleaner format. Um, and it also gives kind of a background of of our municipality, um, our demographics, it'll have a, uh, uh, a page about the demographics in Torrington, um, and kind of our, um, our struggles and being able to, uh, I don't know the right word I want to use on that, um. Our struggles in being able to fund certain things. Um, I know that, you know, we did the revale and there is growth in that revale. Um, but there's no new new housing or new developments that is bringing in more revenue. Um, so it's still the same tax base that we're looking at, um, but this, it's a, it's a cloud based program. Uh, many municipalities actually use it. I reached out to one municipality, um, and they rave about it, so we're we're going to have a kickoff call with them next Monday, um, and get the ball rolling and fingers crossed everything goes smooth and that's how our budget presentation will be done this year.
So, um, and I think, Mrs. Trapp, at the subcommittee, um, meeting this last week, you had mentioned, uh, wanting to see that information about, you know, our population and demographics. You know, because what we know is, uh, there's such a wide variance between uh, the ability to pay. And I think this budget book really did, um, help us be able to hone in on, you know, how do we tell the story about, uh, our budgets? How do we tell the story about the city and those demographics? Um, and in a really easy to read with some graphs, um, uh, format, so uh, I'm excited to be able to bring that forward this year. We made that decision kind of late, but Clerk of Assured is that they can get us across the finish line with it. Um, and, uh, I'm hopeful that, uh, as a Board of Finance and the City Council review that budget book, um, you'll agree that this is really how we should be communicating with our public on budgets. So if there are no further questions, um, before the board, I'm going to move into the agenda item. Eight, I'll entertain a motion to consider business by Mayor and Members.
So moved.
Thank you, Mr. Bayes and Mrs. Wright, I, Mrs., sorry, Mrs. Trapp. That's the second time I did that. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Uh, so, um, anything this evening, Mr. Wright?
Uh, Route four, which has been heavily constructed, and I know that, uh, we were facing a lot of frostheaves and so forth, but is the state going to remediate that in some way, shape or form?
Yes, yeah, it is my understanding that it is going to be repaved from, uh, from Riverside to Main Street. Um, I know that they're still in there, they're still doing some gas lines. But it is, it's a mess, it is, it's terrible. Sure, um, anything this evening, Mrs. Iain Asino?
No, I'm all good, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bayes, anything this evening?
Just to piggyback on Mr. Wright's, um, question, are, I know they're doing gas lines now, starting now on Midgeon, on our section of Midgeon. Um, I know we awarded a contractor, are we moving towards getting that paved?
Yes, that project is going to be a spring project. Uh, we fully expect it's going to be a long, uh, project. So, um, we're, we're encouraging every source to finish up what they need to do by way of those gas laterals. Um, and then, um, we'll go in and do the complete reconstruction, which includes trail and sidewalk. Uh, that is a summer of twenty twenty five project.
Thank you.
Um, and Mrs. Trapp, anything this evening?
I just want to say, obviously, that during our budget subcommitting, we we did get notified that Torring Ford Volunteer Fire Department was going to be closing. Um, so part of our budget review, and I, um, number one, appreciate, obviously, all the years of service, but I think from a Board of Finance perspective, um, having just come back on the board, um, I know there's a lot of comments and questions and targeted attacks and everything on whether it's the mayor or the board or the City Council or anything. I think I just want to remind people that things like this that have to do with volunteerism, um, it's a wheel with many spokes. And so, you know, while there are, I'm sure, financial considerations to having the volunteer fire departments, much as we just heard from Drakeville, um, there are other reasons why sometimes a volunteer organization just cannot, um, function, so I I just, I would sincerely hope that if anybody has any questions financially about what happened with it, um, as part of the spokes in the wheel, that they would reach out to you, the mayor, um, to talk to you directly so that, you know, we have a more true picture of the history of it. Um, in the meantime, again, I appreciate everything they've done for the town over the last, how many decades?
Yeah, I appreciate those comments and, um, and I agree. And I think that Torring Ford is trying to do their best to remind the public that you can't be a volunteer organization if you don't have volunteers. So, um, I I do appreciate that. All right, if there is nothing else for the board this evening, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. Thank you, Mr. Wright.
Second.
And Mr. Bayes, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? We're adjourned. Uh, and then next month, um, we're sort of meeting heavy with, uh, regular, uh, Board of Finance and then the special um, meetings, joint meetings and public hearing, I think it's Board of Education is the first up in the line of public hearings, so, um, fasten your safety belts. Thank you, everybody.
Okay.
Thank you.
All in favor? Yeah. Thank you.
Thanks. Bye.